Lower body.
We'll go ahead and call our meeting back to order. General business, first line of business will be the Lions Club roof project bids.
Hello again.
Hello, sir.
We've got the third bid that was missing previously. And since this bid has been received, I believe that the Lions Club wants to take on this task in-house themselves.
Sir.
My finger, but with what we've heard this morning, I think with some of the previous discussions that we've had about facilities and grounds and ownerships and such, and I don't want to speak for our attorney, but I believe that there are some things that she continues to look into as far as that relate to this specific request. And I would, and I hope that she'll concur, I would ask that maybe we table this until your next meeting to allow for some additional understanding and research to be done. That goes one step deeper if you look down at one of your budget amendments, it also applies to that one as well. I'll address that when it comes out, but that's only my suggestion. And Heather, I don't know if you have anything to add to that?
I would just concur at this point.
So we want to table this till the next, next meeting or next mid-month?
Chairman, I'm confused. You saying now that the Lions Club doesn't need the money? Is that what we're saying?
Well, I think there's some other circumstances.
Excuse me, but I believe the quote was, I believe they're going to take care of it now or something other. You would oversee the job, releasing the county from liability, but you would be looking for half of the cost from us.
That's where the legal probably comes in. I would, I would agree and make a motion that we table this until all that's flushed out, so the county is safe on.
Chairman, I would ask the Honorable Fisher to make it a date certain. If we table it, it may be 2025 before we get to it, but if we make it a date certain, we know that we've got to put it on the agenda.
We're on for two weeks, the first of the month meeting.
Our next meeting.
Right, Bobby, you had a question?
Well, that was what I was, our first meeting in September, I assume, will be moved to the seventh. That'll be a Tuesday instead of a Monday.
Day after Labor Day.
God, summer's gone.
It's tabled, you're asking to table.
Asking to table for two weeks.
A motion, we table until the first meeting in September, date to be determined.
A motion to table the first meeting?
To our next meeting in September the seventh.
That's what I put in motion.
The motion, we hear a second. Second that. End of the discussion, all in favor, raise your hand. Five oh. I'll let Heather, she would, address that, please. Understand that. Collaborate on them getting a release form signed and all that legality.
I understand where you're coming from, but the, the main issue, I think, for us is trying to make sure who owns that property because, well, there's the question. So that's what I want to look into because if, if there's a question about who the ownership is, then obviously there's a question about who's covering insurance and liability. And even if somebody signs a waiver, you know, there's all kinds of issues with that. So I don't really want to just say, oh, sure, no problem, you know, jump in and it's okay. I really, I think we need to resolve this issue anyway, and this gives us a little bit of time to be able to resolve it. We have to look at what's on public record.
What's on record?
So that's what we're going to look into and come to figure out what's, what's the situation.
We'll, she can check this out, we'll be back with it in two weeks.
I'm, I'm sorry, I don't want to interrupt, but the public is not able to hear your side because only that mic, if you go to the mic, please, with your comments so that the public could hear it. Can we go into closed session for the legal?
And rest of that. Okay, we got a motion and a second and voted five oh, to table this till, for two weeks. So that being said, we'll move on down to the next item of business, which is Veterans Park track quote.
All right, got a quote to do reground asphalt on the track at Veterans Park. I don't know if y'all are familiar with how that works. They take milling from ground up paved roads and then relay it and gets pressed down and it's basically as secure as asphalt. This would save us money in the long run, I think, instead of buying gravel every year and then it just get washed away by the floods. I believe this will hold up against the Rising Creek. You have the quote in front of you, that's from L and W excavation, and I would propose pulling the money from the recreation fund and putting it in the Veterans Park maintenance fund to pay for that. Currently, there's $1,500 in my fund for the maintenance for Veterans Park, and so it would be $4,700 to come out of that to make up the difference.
Speaking of the board.
Is there any other quote or is this the only quote?
No, that's the only quote, to my knowledge. I mean, I don't, I'm sure there's some others out there that do this type of resurface, but not that I'm aware of. And then if we went regular pavement, that of course is going to be much higher.
It needs to be fixed. It's a, looks to me like a huge liability for people out there walking on that track, the shape it's in now.
The shape it's in right now, most definitely. And then again, I mean, we could put gravel down and then, you know, it could flood next week and then that gravel's gone, and so then it's liability again.
You have money in your budget to do this?
No, I have 1,500 in the Veterans Park budget for maintenance that's used typically for gravel and other needs, but I'm requesting that we move money from the recreation fund to the Veterans Park maintenance.
It's budgeted money, it's just in a different department, you need it to come for this project.
It's in the outdoor recreation fund, the Beamer money.
Coming out of Beamers?
Correct.
May I make a comment? Look at the second page of your agenda, you will see item 11, which is recreation line item transfers, which is on page 43. Believe that's what you're referencing, isn't it?
Correct.
I think your first item of business up top under item three was to identify the quote, and I think to get feedback from the board on the proposal. And then that is actually a separate request later on in your agenda is to consider, one, moving funds to accommodate this request, and then there are also funds that would have allowed for some assistance on the Lions Club roof, which we have now tabled until your September meeting, if I'm reading it correct.
Hundred and eight thousand and sixty-four dollars.
How much is in Beamer?
Hundred and eight thousand and sixty-four dollars. I believe so too, and then additionally save us money in the long run.
And I would.
Got a motion, here a second. I'll second that.
Second, whatever.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Get my honor in favor. Five oh. Next is agricultural fair request, Travis Dalton. Mr. Dalton.
Evening, board. I'm here today on behalf of the Allegheny Ag Advisory Board and not the county department I represent, but we are looking at last weekend of September, first weekend of October, bringing back the Allegheny Fair. We tried it two years ago, funds wasn't available, timing wasn't available to have rides, and that was our number one complaint, was we didn't have carnival rides for the kids. And with just pumpkin, pumpkin junk and corn maize, which we're still going to have all that this year, but we're looking at getting rides, and we have a ride, which we need to have a contract signed by August 25th. And it's 10,000 a day for Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and 6,000 for Sunday, for a total of 36,000. That includes 10 rides, four small children entertainment, four games, and I think three or four food trucks of carnival food, candy apple, cotton candy, stuff like that. And that's all we brought by him. And that price, whether we charge for armbands or tickets at the door, whichever way we decide to go, everything comes in the gate, comes back to the ag board. That's a one set price for him. And it's an event, we think, means agriculture is number one industry in the county, trying to promote it, and everybody you always talk to is talking about how kids have nothing to do in this county. Something to try to get the kids out there so they can see what agriculture is about because we'll have animals livestock show, corn maize, and just a way to try to get people out there to the fairgrounds. And we've been, so far, we have one sponsor, a business in the county, who is wanting to sort of have employee day for his employees, he's already got a $7,500 sponsorship toward that 36,000. Our chairman, Johnny Wishon, went to the town at their last meeting, we wasn't on the agenda, so he was at public comments, so they couldn't vote, but they have addressed their support to help fund the other 30,000 that's left. And we're here today asking for roughly, maybe hoping for 10,000 from this board, and hopefully the town will match the 10,000, and then we'll keep fundraising for the rest.
I think that's a thing to try to promote for the, for the agriculture fair.
Hoping that after this year, we should have enough attendees to help fund, and hopefully after two to three years, it'll be self-funded and we'll not have to come back between advertising, sponsorships, and gate money, it should be a self-revolving thing.
The sponsors you say you had, us and one?
One so far, one major sponsor, but two years ago, we had a bunch. I mean, the community really wanted to help with it. We didn't have, before we go, asking for advertisements, we need the date locked in, and we need to know if we have the port to sign the contract on the rides.
What happens if we do a deposit and governor locks everything down, we can't have it? Do we get our money back? What's?
We either get our money back or get another lockdown on a date for when it opens up, and they do have insurance that protects events like this too, we're looking into.
We have insurance in case you get rained out for a day or two and.
Price checking.
Good idea.
I even hate to even go here, what happens if COVID is, if something happens and the governor starts restricting again? Is there a contract or we?
We sign a contract tentative next Wednesday, depending on details of this meeting and some other details we have to work out. But if, if it gets shut down, we either, the contract will be forwarded till another date next year when it opens back up, or we'll ask for a refund.
If there's a contract to be signed, I think that legal needs to look at that contract. I mean, isn't that something we've already agreed upon? Show they do approve the contract.
It's not county.
I'm, and I'm fine with that, but it's the ag advisory board instead of the county, I don't know the difference.
If it's not, you know, if it's something they're going to use the fairgrounds for, then obviously they're filling out the application. It's not the county that's putting it on, they're just asking for funds to be able to have rides for the kids at the fairgrounds. So if it's not, the, the county is putting on the fair, then, then the county doesn't have the liability for the contract that is signed. So that, there's a difference there between how this is being run. So they would fill out an application like anybody else that's going to use the fairgrounds, and then they're responsible for everything that would fall under that contract. It's not the county that's contracting with this company for the rides.
About the 10,000 that the county's going to give?
Well, then the county determines how you're paying that money. If it's coming out of something for, you know, budget or some other fund that the county's paying, you're not contracting though, that's just you giving the money to be able to have the rides for the event. I don't know if there's any liability because you're not signing the contract for it, you're just helping with the funds for the organization that is going to be doing it.
Yes, where's the money coming from?
I like how everybody looked at me.
When it comes to anything with a dollar sign on it, you are harder than the lips on a redheaded woodpecker. It is your budget, and I am not going to get into that arena because I will lose. Do we have the money, sir?
Let me answer it a couple of different ways. The first way is it wasn't budgeted. Let me answer it a couple of different ways. The first way is it wasn't budgeted for.
Thank you.
Now, we may not have knew about it, and, and I, I don't, I don't want Travis or anybody else to think, we've had a brief discussion about this. And, and I'm just as big a agriculture guy as anybody here. So it's, but, asking me a question, and I'm gonna tell you, there's no line item in the budget for that. Now, we're early in the budget cycle. We're going into the, end of the second month of the first quarter. So it's not like it's easily for me to identify areas that we may recognize savings for to apply towards that fund yet. We're a month and a half deep in the budget. It's, it's easy to pick, you know, we developed an unassigned fund balance for a reason. And if you heard the financial report earlier, that's got a lot to do with that reason. You have the ability, yeah, you can use unassigned fund balance, but just know that it's not coming back. I don't want to rain on the day. Travis and I had this conversation. First thing I asked him, well, actually, I told him, I said, they all gonna look at me and say where it's coming from. And I should have bet some money, because every head in this room turned and looked right at me, and this pause come across. But I'm just as straight as I can be. There's no budgeted line for it. If you choose to use the unassigned fund balance, there are funds there, but that's the only one I can tell you today that there are funds in.
Mr. Chairman? You know, to me, this is an ambush. Look at a budget. We go through a budget cycle. We'd, we'd study. What's the other thing that we got ambushed on?
Day?
Agricultural dinner. I mean, as a county, if we are going to have a budget, it is something that we must prepare in advance. We must take this, these things into consideration. Now, we have a timeline. Now, granted, we may have money in a fund right now, but as the county manager says, it's early in the year. We do not know what we are going to run into if we are shut down again. There's too many unknowns on this. To me, this is the three Ps.
I know where the manager's coming from. Bill and I sat in on the Finance Committee, and that budget basically is set in stone. There's a little give and a few things. But this, the fair, is something that these little kids have not had in the last year and a half. And this is a possibility to showcase the fairgrounds. And I don't know how we can do it without upsetting the budget, without breaking what we set in stone for the budget. But there's gotta be some way that we can pull this thing off, if nothing else, for all the little kids that have missed out for the last year and a half. And hell, who knows? It may be another year. It's, this is what the fairgrounds was designed for.
The reason why this wasn't budgeted, at the time of budget, the state was still under lockdown. So through our Ag Department to extension, we weren't able to even talk contract. And then when we started talking dates, it took two months to get locked down a date that was open because of everybody fighting for open dates this fall. And it took us until two weeks ago to actually get this date. And if we don't have it by Wednesday, it's gone to another county.
When do you have to know something? By Wednesday?
Next Wednesday, if we don't have a contract signed, it's, we lose our, we lose our lockdown on the dates, and it goes back open to somebody else waiting in line.
I have a proposal, Mr. Chairman. We've got two ag banquet scheduled for this year, do we not?
Yes, sir.
Cancel the second one.
Money from last year rolled into this year to cover.
We can, we can use the second to help pay for this.
I mean, the money stayed the same on the ag banquet, because we didn't use it last year. We're gonna, you're rolling into this year and having two awards banquets, right? That's where that come from, is last year.
What was the? The opinion? Because of how things have been, and have any opportunity to do this, I, I'm in favor of doing it.
I take my kids every year to Carroll County, and you wouldn't believe the number of Allegheny residents you'll see over there with their kids that travel for that.
Waive the county give back some.
I would even make a motion that we use ten thousand of the unassigned fund balance. It's that, that covered in some. I believe there's opportunity.
I agree with that. I think it's, we need to do it for the kids. We need to, a little bit back. I mean, they've been in the house, and it's, it's a good thing. Get her fire back to going. It has a good potential of having some seed money to carry in the next year off of this, so we might not have to go through this again next year. Hopefully, that's the way that'll work out. Uh, it's just a good thing to do and, and to help the kids out, buddy.
Is there any time left to approach? I, I don't know if this comes under TDA for Tourism Development. I don't know if it comes under, uh, the Rotary Club. I don't know how strong they still are. Is there any organizations out there?
We're already applying to the TDA for help, too. That's in the process. We have a TDA grant. I know in the previous ag fair two years ago, they made a donation or a grant to support to get it rolling.
Yeah.
Was that a motion?
Don't get me wrong. I, I would love to see the kids have an ag fair, and I think it would be great. It's just that we've got this big question mark. We don't, we're early in the budget.
And the other question to me, if COVID cancels it, we still have to pay that ten thousand dollars?
That's, that'll be in the contract. And that's, I have not seen the contract because we hadn't received it yet. But if it's in the contract with that, then I will say we'll have to definitely get the insurance that would cover the money, or postpone the contract to a later date.
Again, I would ask for something to be in the contract if, if this is declared by the governor or the county or government, whatever, that those funds, those ten thousand dollars are refunded to the county.
Sir.
Was it, was the town, were they, you said they were receptive?
It was public comment. They could not vote, but they all were in favor of a substantial help for this. They didn't discuss exact number, but they said, yes, at the next meeting, when they could vote, they would vote to make a substantial donation.
The reason I ask that is if, if you are considering doing this, maybe the motion should be at a not to exceed amount of ten thousand, because you truly don't know what amount you're gonna need at this point. That's, that's a guesstimate, as I'm hearing it. So if you at least establish a baseline of a not to exceed amount, now, I don't know what that does for the town's contribution. I don't know about the TDA. I don't know any of those components, but that may at least, you know, it could be lesser of an impact for you with all of these other opportunities that's been described.
Your motion to? Not to exceed ten? Or up to ten? In or less?
I'd, I'd like to understand the motion. If, if we make a motion, I'm just asking a question, to say that we will not exceed seven thousand dollars, and hopefully the town will give ten, or give three, to make the ten, not?
That's not what I'm saying.
Okay.
Somewhere, there's a base number that it's gonna cost, thirty?
Thirty, thirty-six thousand just for the rides.
But you've got seventy-some-hundred dollars committed.
Seventy-five-hundred sponsorship.
So whatever that remaining balance is, is what it would cost, as I understand it, for those three days. And you've got an application in TDA, you've got different fillers out there, plus whatever fundraising that's going to take place. What I'm saying is for the county, if you want to consider applying ten thousand dollars, you, you don't at this moment know if it's going to be a full ten or less than ten because of the other questions that revolve around the other funding sources. So I would ask you to, to consider making a motion to, to not exceed up to ten thousand dollars, which gives you that flexibility. Now, the question that goes along with that is, you know, or Wednesday, you said Wednesday? So two days from now?
Next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday. Okay. So a week and two days from now, you should know about where you are in line with that thirty-some-thousand dollars left to, to make it happen. If you don't ma, if you don't have the funds for those, that, that amount left, the thirty-whatever thousand dollars, what happens to that ten thousand dollars? I mean, how do, how do we make that difference up if there's still a void between all of those funding scenarios and what it costs to bring those rides to the fairgrounds?
Man, we're doing fundraising to the whole county, selling ads for banners, billboards, flyers, the fairgrounds packet like we had.
But the only reason I say that is, and I hope you don't, but if you do fall short, that, that up to ten thousand dollars is not going to get that group here for those three days, as I understand it, whatever that shortage may be, if there is a shortage.
And our Ag Advisory Board has a little nest egg that we're gonna put into that. It's not very much from the last fair, because we didn't have a lot of attendance after we paid for the rodeo. But between the town, if they would match the ten, and the ten here, if that's what it takes, it'd be the twenty, then the seventy-five-hundred, we're getting close. And then with the TDA, if we could get the full five, I think that we're asking for on the grant from them. Other, I know we could get in promised donations.
I'm just trying to clarify all that.
Nothing's in writing, but we have verbal promises of good donations to help make it work.
Just want everybody to understand the full picture.
You expect to make a profit on this deal, is, is what you're hoping for. Out of that profit, could that county money that's given to you, could you give that back to this county? Who does that, where does that money wind up? Where does the profit wind up?
It goes, right now, the way it's set up, it'd go back to the Ag Advisory Board in the nest egg for next year's fair to either increase it, pay for?
Seed money for next year if we got a profit, for the Advisory Board, Agriculture Board. Got a motion over. Is any more questions?
Uh, yeah, I have one question. Have you made application for the fairgrounds?
I have not, but Aaron Ray handles that side of the deal.
When would you have the agricultural fair? September, October?
It's the dates that we have open is the last weekend. It's like September thirtieth, first, second, October.
You've got your forty-five days to make the application. Uh, the TDA will not meet again until September? So you won't know, you're cutting things mighty close.
Okay.
I will second that motion if it has not been seconded, Mr. Chairman.
The motion is second. Prove up to ten thousand dollars, not to exceed ten thousand dollars for the ag fair for this fall. Further discussion?
Let's see what he's.
Not all in favor, raise your hand.
Let's see what he's writing.
I just read it.
All I'm doing is?
I just read it.
Let's go on, be sure that I'm.
We got a motion in a second, all in favor. Five oh.
And I would like to remind her, our ag banquet is the twenty-fourth, so next Tuesday. If you or anybody in the public would like to attend, we're capped at two hundred tickets this year, and we cut it back from three hundred from two years ago, trying to save costs and size of venue. And it's, if you need tickets, they're first come, first served. Contact Extension Office or Dean at Salt and Water. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is earthquake damage tipping fee.
Chairman, I, I'll take both of those if we could, while we've got Travis and David in here. After Druid went back and looked at the minutes, it seems that there was a waiving of the tipping fees and the building, uh, fees associated for a year after the earthquake, and that runs out, I think, first, second week of September. So we've still got some things going on. Um, that has came up. We need to determine whether or not you want to extend that for another period of time or not.
What's the recommendation? How much more is it to come?
I would, I would think, you know, personally, I would think you'd probably at least extend it through the end of the calendar year, and then you could reevaluate it at that point. And David, you and Travis, you guys are on the front line. You know what's coming in, going out.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we extend the waiver of tipping fees, uh, for earthquake victims until June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-two. Got nine houses to be rebuilt. We're wait, we're looking at a year. And we receiving additional damages from aftershocks. Just additional damage, which means additional trash.
That motion.
Got a motion and a second to extend this till June the thirtieth of twenty-two. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand.
Well, I, I just thought we should honor the.
We, we can always rescind that.
Rescind the motion.
Well, no, I, what I meant was if we go until June the thirtieth of twenty-twenty-two, and suddenly all is right in the world, and every house has been rebuilt, torn down, and everything else, we can always rescind that.
Which way?
That is the next one. It's a separate item.
Hear a motion about the building fees, permanent fees.
I'll make the same motion, Mr. Chair.
Twenty-two.
Sir. Gonna revoke.
Any further discussion? Not all in favor, raise your hand. Five oh. JCPC reappointment. Ms. Amy Lucas, reappoint her to the JCPC Board.
I'd make that motion.
Second. Further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Five oh. Full off truck procurement approval, County Manager.
Chairman, in your adopted budget for this year, there were, there was a line item budgeted. Chairman, in your adopted budget for this year, there was a line item budgeted for the purchase of a used roll-off truck. I think I've described on different occasions our situation, and we placed this vehicle in the budget to help remedy some of those concerns. Speaking, and again, I will defer to our county attorney, but it's my understanding that the purchase of a used vehicle in its fashion adheres to a very different procurement process, which basically is not much. What I'd like to mention is there are several roll-off trucks out and about, not right down the road, these trucks are in other states, quite honestly, that we will come across and see, and by the time you inquire about them, they're gone. They just don't stick around, people buy them up. We have seventy-nine thousand dollars in our line item for that purchase. What I would ask the Board to consider is to allow for the purchase of a used roll-off truck, not to exceed the amount allotted in the budget, and allow David Spicer and I to make those arrangements, secure the deal, secure the vehicle, and bring it home to Allegheny.
Second down motion. Motion second, any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Five oh.
If you can save us ten thousand.
Next up, trade and transportation fund budget amendment. Tiffany.
Hello. I'm here today to request a budget amendment for one hundred and sixty-seven thousand twenty dollars. This money was budgeted, and we actually ordered three new vans last year, but we will not receive them until this fiscal year.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
Motion here, second. Motion is second, any discussion? All in favor? Five oh. Thank you. RPA fund budget amendment.
Good afternoon. What you have in front of you is the budget amendment to create the fund for the American Rescue Plan Act monies that the county has received. It's an amount of one million eighty-one thousand dollars, excuse me, one million eighty-one thousand six hundred and sixteen dollars. It will be fund number twenty-six, just because we haven't used that number to start a fund with, and the money has to be spent by fiscal year twenty-six.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
Promotion, second. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Five oh. Recreation line item transfer.
Chairman, we've already handled that.
Okay.
That was when you approved the transfer above for the.
Good afternoon. So I have several things today. First thing is an appeal of a motor vehicle value, which I think you have that information in your packet. Two thousand seventeen BMW X-five. The assessed value that came in on our report was thirty-four thousand four twenty. Got four different values, and the average of those four values is twenty-nine five. That's, assessor recommendation is for twenty-nine five.
Make a motion that we approve a recommended value for the subject vehicle, Mr. Chair.
Got a motion, you have a second. Motion second, any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Five oh.
Next, I have some applications that they're asking for late approval on, and after looking at some of these and talking with the county attorney, I'm going to hand these out to you at the meetings. There's some income and medical information on these, so I'll be handing them out, and then I'll be picking them back up. So you've got, the first one, last name is Cattrail. It was due to illness, it would have been approved had it been timely filed. And the Board can approve a late application for good cause, and good cause is something that we've never. Needed a definition for, so it's up to the Board to determine whether or not they feel like it's good cause.
Motion to approve the application for good cause, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to approve, you're second. Motion is second, any discussion? All in favor? Five oh.
Second request, last name is Wolf, and this one is a little bit different. It's late because they did not know the deadline for the application, and you are going to have several of these coming in the next few meetings as well.
That's the Board's recommendation here.
There's a comment in here, should this be approved for next year?
If the Board determines that not knowing about the deadline for the application being good cause for a late approval, then it will automatically approve for next year.
Promotion.
If I may, Mr. Chair, I note under comments, subject states that they did not receive their AV eight. Till July the thirtieth of twenty twenty-one, after the due date. So. Knowing the date would not have made any difference if they did not receive their form until July, is that correct?
That is correct, and most, like I said, I've got a few more of these to bring that keep coming in, and that's, that's the case on a lot of the veterans, they did not have the AV nine, I believe it is, they did not have those in time to file.
And if memory serves me correct, the VA has been affected by COVID, working from home and not working, so it is valid, possibly. I'll make a motion to approve based on the late arrival of the AV dash nine A certificate of disability from the Veterans Administration, Mr. Chair.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand.
And the last one, last name is Blevins, and late, or reason for late is due to illness, and illness of a family member, taking care of a family member.
I'm sorry, I did not hear the explanation for lateness, and I'm not seeing anything in the file.
Would you split up?
Did you say for illness? Never mind, I've got. I will second that.
I move in a second, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. I vote again.
I think I got your copy, I got the original.
Okay. And I'll pick those back up in a moment here, I'll go on into the consent agenda, if that's okay.
You go right ahead.
All right, so vehicle tax systems, this is for period of July, vehicle tax system refunds, one thousand two ninety-four twenty-four. Do you want me to read these? I can't never, I can never remember that every month, whether you want them read to you or not. Okay.
I don't believe so, Mr. Chair.
Your motion.
Your motion to accept the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Motion. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Five oh.
Thank you very much.
Goldfinger. Next County Manager comment.
I'm in today, you have your July building inspection report included in your packet, I encourage you to look that over. Two other things, August has five Mondays in it, so joint meeting with the town has been your customary thing with five Mondays. That'll be August the thirtieth, there is interest in the town, we're working on putting together some thoughts on that, but as soon as that works out, I'll be glad to send that information to you. Next thing is in addition to everything else going on, April Ham and I are going to start working on your personnel policy, I think you need some changes, updates, more modern things applied to it, so we'll be starting that as well. I do know that we have a noise ordinance committee, as I recall, Wednesday. We'll also be setting up an insurance committee meeting, I believe that Commissioner Bobby and Commissioner Michelle, you two are on that, to talk about some things as well. So a lot of things cooking right now, that's all I have.
Thanks, sir. County Commissioner comments, Mr. Commissioner Evans.
Just want to kind of go back to our last work session. The fire department conversations, and I think there were some things probably revealed, and I've since had some conversations with some at the fire departments, trying to everybody kind of on the same page as to sort of what the fire tax is, the taxing authority, the reserve fund. But what I want to speak to is just for a second, is the conversations that took place, it sounds like, and I wasn't sitting there, but as Mr. Carter was kind of going through and sort of developing the conversation of the tax rates and the revenue it generated, and the conversation with the budget committee, with the individuals from the fire departments, and them making a request, but then didn't want to change their tax rate to reflect what they're asking for. And this plea is really going back to the fire departments to make sure that just one person in the fire department doesn't need that control. I don't know who they're communicating with, and that's not on the county, that's not on the budget committee, it's just that I want to encourage the fire departments to have a conversation among yourselves, to make sure what the process is and what's going on, and make sure, I think the Boards at the fire departments need to be a little more in this conversation and process, so that if somebody is representing the fire department, they fully understand what's going to happen with the rate and the revenue that it's going to generate, and that each fire department is on the same page with that. I mean, you know, if you don't want to raise the rate, you can't get any more money, and there is a limit, you know, the market will only bear so much. And I have had some public, members from the public, I haven't really heard much, but I've heard a few say that they were kind of surprised at what the, how many cents the fire tax actually ended up calculating to be, and I think it ranges from three to seven across the, so just, I know we have work to do, it's beginning, I think we've come a long ways with that, but I think communication going forward, and I know we've all tried to communicate, and the documentation that's been, I think, displayed, they asked for those sheets that we were using, have those been sent out?
It's on the website.
Okay, so it is public on the website, so anybody that wants to see the actual spreadsheets that we've reviewed at last, at that meeting are now on the county website, everybody to see, because that was one of the questions that they seem to not know the answer to, but I believe a lot of that's been produced to someone within all the fire departments, so now it's at a place where everybody can see it. And I just wanted to speak to that, to try to encourage each fire department to kind of communicate among themselves who's really in charge of that meeting with the finance committee here at the county next time, and that's forward, we can clear up hopefully some of those challenges. But it was a good meeting, and I appreciate everybody coming, but we just need to continue to keep driving and looking forward to hopefully resolve some of the questions that come.
Again, I'd like to, you know, mention this every meeting, the Veterans Committee is back on the brick sale, we look forward to, I think we're looking at trying to get two hundred, two hundred and fifty, maybe three hundred bricks sold, so we can have them installed Veterans Day of twenty twenty-two. The speed limit, I'm glad that we're having another DOT conversation at our, I believe it'll be our September the seventh meeting. I would, I would request that the gentleman who rode those roads, see if he could be here to explain to the people of the county that why he thinks they're so dangerous, and the people of the county don't think they're that dangerous. You drive responsibly, you just, people know where they can go fifty-five, and they know where they don't need to be doing fifty-five. I look forward to getting this, the Lions Club issues solved, I wish we could have come to some agreement on that roof, I appreciate the Lions Club wanting to pay a big portion of that and split that with us, I think that needs to be done. That's all.
I would like to say that, yes, we are glad that the DOT came and are coming back again to continue this discussion. The Grandview Drive and also the eighteen bypass intersections are very concerning to me, as are to a lot of folks in the community. I would like to send the call out to everyone to do a few things, and that is volunteer. There's plenty of places that you can do that, we have an upcoming Mountain Heritage Festival, sounds like we're going to have an ag fair, the Lions Club, they mentioned that they need more people to join in with them, so volunteer, and also shop local. You know, everybody, if we don't shop local and support our local merchants, we're just going to continue to lose those, so.
Thank you, sir, Commissioner.
During the discussion of the day, you heard from the Lions Club some references in regards to the pavilion, and they made reference that they paid for it. Part of the problem that we have as county commissioners whenever we sit here is things that we were not involved with, these are, predate us, and this is a classic example. And I'm taking this out of the Allegheny County history from eighteen fifty-nine to nineteen and seventy-six. In nineteen and sixty-seven, a committee known as the Allegheny County Recreation Commission with Mrs. Edwin Duncan, senior, Tom Richardson, Mrs. Tom Doughton, Miss E.A. Dar, Miss E.L. Taylor, Jimmy Atwood, and John Woodruff were the commission. They went and they made application for a grant from the federal government so that we could build a swimming pool. There is only one person alive on this commission, and this is where the rub comes in and why the county attorney will soon be going to the beauty parlor. the beauty parlor two times a month to get a color. They bought the land and put the title in the, in this commission's name, but they never incorporated. A commission, unless incorporated, cannot hold title to property. The Lions Club, in 1973, the Lions Club aided by a federal grant paid by Miss Hady Brown, $35,000 for the remainder of San Brown's Mountain. I've got news for you. San Brown Mountain is in the same title as this committee, this commission. Now, Bobby didn't believe me until he went and he looked at the title. He brought the title up. Sure enough. Now, where does this fall? The county don't own it. We have no legal title to it. It's one person alive on the commission, but the commission can't own it. We're going to end up in court. This, in the past, and this falls right back on the, on the fairgrounds. In the past, everything was a wink and a handshake, good old boy, and this is the way we're going to do it, and here we are. I graduated from high school in 1967, so what, we're two, three generations down the road, and we are facing this problem? I mean, this is something that, if you want to run for county commissioner, put this in the back of your, back of your, your brain housing group, because you're going to face things like this. I said that I would quit the day that two women walk in with a baby. I'm beginning to hear squeaks outside that door, because that's about the only thing that can come in front of this, these county committees, the county commissioners. Lord have mercy. These, this is something that, that we didn't have any part of. It is hard. I respect the Lions Club. Been around for, since I was knee-high to a grasshopper, but unfortunately, the buck stops here, and the buck is on our, the bill's on our table, and we're going to have to come up, and hopefully we can come with an equitable agreement if we can get this property in the county name, because right now, we, we cannot do a memorandum of understanding on property we don't own. So please, public, be aware of this and, and realize that it, things are not as easy as they appear. Right now, we are having an uptick. One thing I would like for all of you to realize, since January, we have 1.3 illegal aliens that have been distributed throughout the United States. Right now, 25 to 30% are testing positive for COVID, and you wonder why we have an outbreak. That is 1.3 million caught. They reckon, they estimate they only get a third. My brother made comment where he was working that event at the Greensboro Coliseum, and he pulled three buses in, opened the doors and let them out. No one there to greet them. They filed out, looked around like, oh my God, where am I? Strange country, strange language. COVID is going to be with us for a long time, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to echo what Commissioner Evans said about the, the fire tax. I had a volunteer fire department came to me, oh, y'all said wrong. I never got the money I asked for in the budget, but they said they didn't want the fire tax to go up. Hey, folks, if you say that you want to keep the same tax rate, you only get that amount of money, and because you want more, I'm sorry, you said that you would accept what the tax rate brought in. So please, please remember this, and God bless them for what they do. They're always out there, and they are with us. And finally, I woke up to a nightmare this morning. This is just comments Bobby mentioned that whenever he was in Vietnam and the Tet Offensive started. Mine was Operation Frequent Wind. I helped bring out over eight, nine thousand refugees. First boat coming out was 4,755. First refugee that died was in, within eight hours. Forty-year-old woman. Next refugee was an 18-month-old child. We pulled off of Vietnam with 4,755. We pulled into the Philippines with 4,755. Never went 24 hours from burying a refugee to birthing one. Why do I say this? Because I turned on TV today and I watched the helicopter land on the embassy in Kabul. I never thought I'd see it again in my day, but this one's different. We have over 500 Americans that are now behind Taliban lines, and will be beheaded, executed, simply because they're American. You turn on your TV and you look, you would have seen a C-17 that had landed in Kabul, and there were 100 at least on that aircraft trying to taxi to the shutdown area. Runways are full. You know what's coming. It is sad. Next time you walk up to Afghan-Viet, thank him, because just like Vietnam, we led. The politicians led, and the common people died. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Don't leave much to be said. I'd just like to thank the Board for supporting the fair and the carnival and what we did here today. I think it's a good thing to give back to the county and the community. I think it's been an event. People go out there and spend 10 or 15 bucks apiece and ride all day long, just all they want to ride. I think that's the way it's being set up, and, and I think that'll be good, good for the county and good for the, especially good for the kids. And our tax, these board directors sitting in these departments, that's their task, is to manage that department and oversee the expenditures of money. That's the number-one task they have to do. And I think they need to do a good job in trying to do that. That's, that's the way the protocol is, and it's a good, for good, good for the departments to move on and do that. Music on Main's coming up, music in the parts coming up. That's a good, good events, and go relax and enjoy. They're, they're rather, the atmosphere is great at those things. That's all I have. Michael.
Motion.
Heather. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor. Thank y'all. It's been a long day.